Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna call the Wednesday, February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Lacey Planning Commission to order. Uh, roll call, it looks like. Who's here? Awesome. Hey, and I forgot to ask somebody before the meeting, so I put you on the spot. Um, Robert, would you read the land for me?
Of course. We, the city of Lacey, are in an ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of the Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and Squaxon Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who were absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as the traditional stewards of the land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of disposition, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as they have today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty-four.
Thank you. So before we get to approval of the agenda, I want to welcome our audience, even though you were compelled to be here.
Audience.
Uh, I would be looking for an approval of tonight's agenda. I need a motion.
So moved, seconded.
All right, been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. And then the January twenty-two minutes.
So moved.
Okay. Yep. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Okay, public comment. Do we have anybody online?
We don't have anybody that's registered. If there's anybody in the room, no, there's one member of the public here that's not staff or associated with an agenda item. They're saying they don't have any comments, so at this point, I think it's safe to move on to the next agenda item.
Okay. So, commission members, do you have any reports? Okay, department.
Yeah, just one item and um, just wanted to bring up that we will be, we've been advertising and we'll be interviewing for the vacant planning commission seat um, coming up next week. So um, Gail has volunteered to be the, the planning commission representative on those, those interviews. Chair Gabman and Vice Chair Moore were not able to attend, so um, Gail has nicely volunteered to do that. That'll be Wednesday of next week. Hopefully, after that, we'll get somebody quickly appointed and um, have a full nine members of the planning commission. We um, were interviewing um, three applicants. Unfortunately, um, you know, our goal was to try to get um, a second member from the urban growth area. Um, and at this point, no, there were no um, members of the public that applied for, from the UGA. So um, at this point, it looks like, I, I, I think the preference is to have all seats filled rather than trying to wait for a, a UGA member. So this point, it looks like the, the next member will represent the city, um, which is just fine. Um, so um, yeah, happy to report kind of maybe next time what the, the mayor's recommendation is. So it'll be myself, you know, and the mayor that'll be doing the interviews next week. And hopefully, after, soon after that, we'll have the results that'd be able to share. Um, when the, when the appointment might be coming forward to the council and then when their first meeting would be, which would probably be, probably estimated probably the beginning of April. So um, yeah, at this point, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have no public hearing. We got new business, uh, which is a recap of the joint meeting that we had two weeks ago in the open house. Um, I think the joint meeting went very, very well. The uh, council members uh, gave us some good input and we gave them some good input and it, it's always been a good back and forth with them. The open house was well attended. We have sixty-five.
Yeah.
Sixty-five people, and I know most of you were there, able to be there. Really good interaction with the public, a lot of sticky notes, which is good. Um, but I'm gonna let Ryan kind of lead off the discussion.
Yeah, so thanks, uh, Chair Gavin. So we'll, we'll get started maybe and talk a little bit first about the joint meeting um, and then move into the open houses. They are, they were kind of two separate animals. And so the idea is, first of all, I kind of want to set the stage with what, like, we as staff took away from each of these things um, and then get your perspectives as well, because um, especially on the open house, you know, we weren't able to um, be everywhere all at one time. And I know that there was a lot of conversations going on. And so it would be good to hear from maybe each one of you as far as like, what were some of those conversations? And what were some of those important points? So we can capture that as staff. So maybe we'll start out with the joint meeting um, and I'll give my perspective and then maybe we can just turn it over to the group to provide any other feedback. So um, going into the joint meeting, you know, the, give you some background, the, the city council has asked with the update to the comprehensive plan to really be involved in the development of the plan. And in order to do that, they basically need the same kind of level of education that the planning commission has related to the comprehensive plan. So um, you all, like, starting in December, we've been doing these kind of big sessions on the comp plan. And um, unfortunately, you know, part of what we had to do in order to bring the, the city council up to the same level was repeat some of the information. So thank you all for sticking around that did um, through the whole meeting because um, a lot of it was, was repetitive. Um, so it probably seemed very familiar by the end of it. It was two and a half hours. So thanks for, you know, bearing with us as we were able to get um, through it. But we, we achieved what we set out to do, which was to kind of level the level, level the level of education between both the, the um, the planning commission and the council. Um, you know, especially related to land use, transportation, housing, um, climate change and resiliency. Those were the kind of the main topics of the night. And so we, we achieved what we set out to do. Um, my initial or my, my kind of takeaways related to kind of the, the meeting, as Jeff said, you know, there was some good information sharing with the planning commission and the council. Unfortunately, for the, for the planning commission, oftentimes, these feel like you're almost like a guest at a, at a city council meeting rather than being kind of like a true, like, joint meeting. And so um, it's a little bit, bit of a one-sided conversation. And unfortunately, you know, one of the things we'll have to just keep in mind as staff and as, you know, the planning commission works through some of these things in cooperation with the council is that the, the council likes to really kind of get into the weeds on stuff. And I, I think as you saw um, at the, at the meeting, they wanted to jump right from talking about, I'll, I'll use this as an example, going right from our climate resiliency sub-element to how do we um, incentivize solar panels, right? That was a good example where the, the discussion kind of went a little bit off track. So, you know, we as staff in the end, with the help of the planning commission, hopefully, as we talk to the council, can kind of lift them up and consider that, you know, the, the reason we're doing a comprehensive plan is that it really sets the stage for what's to come. It's not to necessarily figure out, like, the details, like, we should be, like, incentivizing solar panels. But it's that, that thirty thousand foot level look at all of our kind of, you know, how we're gonna grow and develop in the future, what our policies, what our goals should be um, to kind of, you know, establish those programs at some point in the future, if so desired. So, you know, that's, from, from my takeaway, that was the big thing of the night is just kind of just a reminder that when we're, you know, talking about the comprehensive plan, when we're presenting this information to make sure that people understand that this is really setting the stage for the work to come. Um, and the works come could be code updates, it could be programs, it could be a lot of different things, and not to try to get too bogged down in those specifics that we're really trying to set the stage and making sure that this is, you know, that the community is speaking through us to, to make their priorities heard. So. Um, so with that, happy to kind of turn it over to you. Just generally, any other thoughts? Um, feedback that anybody would like to provide that?
Sure.
So I'm just gonna go around.
Uh, my, my big thing was I liked the less formal style of that joint meeting where it felt like there was a lot more spontaneous interaction versus the round robin approach. And I know why we switched to this. Just a big proponent of that. It felt like there was more flexibility for ideas and suggestions without it being as rigid um, or having to see that thing through. Uh, so that's all.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm doing my Debbie Downer thing here. Um, I, I always think that um, when we, I, I agree with you, Ryan. I think that what we hear are people's specific prep, pet projects or um, smaller ideas. We don't hear a general scope of where they want the comp plan to land. And so then what happens is we sort of fight through the fog and put the camp, the comp plan together and send it up. And, you know, more than once, it's been, oh, no, that isn't what we meant. But you didn't tell us what you meant. So it's very difficult to plumb the depths of what it is they want um, when they skip immediately to what I would say are, you know, important but um, smaller items. That was my take.
And I'll just say too, you know, it's, it's really about kind of establishing the vision um, and, and kind of trying to see that through as part of the, and, you know, what, how that should be articulated through the comprehensive plan. So sometimes that's hard, especially, you know, for council members, for elected officials to be, you know, at that level. Um, because they really want to get, like, they, they want to do stuff, right? They want to, you know?
Who called me last week.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, yep. Good comment.
I had the flu, so I was not there. I'm sorry.
I wasn't able to attend as well.
I, I know. I just wanted to hear if you had thoughts. Karen?
Um, it was a great time to just kind of review what we had seen and also a chance to kind of hear from the city council. So it was a wonderful opportunity.
Elliot?
Um, I enjoyed the meeting and, and I felt that every, every viewpoint was uh, inputted and, and heard. And I really especially liked that.
Okay, Robert.
I don't know if it would just be the format of, of the city council getting up to speed and then having us have a conversation, but it just kind of felt like the cart was in front of the horse, like, we had a conversation. And then they were like, hey, can you sit around and listen to the things that you've already heard for the next two and a half hours? And we all went, yeah. Uh, which, you know, it's, it's fine, but I think it, it, it led to not as maybe a robust of discussion. If they were on the same level of us, and then we could say, okay, you've heard what we've heard, now what? Versus like, you've kind of heard what we heard, you're gonna say a lot of things, and then you're gonna hear what we heard. And now the meeting's over. Um, so just thinking about maybe the order in which it happened.
Yeah, I, you know, I've, I've always enjoyed the joint meetings, uh, city council and, and the planning commission. But what I wish we would have heard as planning commission that night was kind of a consensus idea on, on
Yes.
what we're supposed to do, right? Uh, you know, here's what we would like to see as a vision for the city in the comp plan so that we were kind of given sort of a direction on where to go. Because to Gail's point, you know, what I don't want this commission to have happen is where we recommend something and then the council comes back with, eh, that's not what we meant. Um, so I wish we could have gotten more of that. And maybe that's part of me and Ryan getting with the mayor in, in more advance of the meeting and kind of laying out what the planning commission wants to hear. Uh, because a lot of the stuff that is in the weeds is just not in our purview. It, it's not what we're supposed to do.
Yeah, yeah, really good points. Um, you know, and, and frankly, this is, you know, the last time we updated our comprehensive plan was ten years ago. And we used a, a much different process where basically, you know, the planning commission was kind of establishing the vision, doing all that work. We, yes, we checked in with the, the council, but not to the same level that it, that the council has requested this time. And so for us, it's gonna be a little bit of a, a learning curve, a little bit of an adjustment to make sure that, you know, we're kind of trying to educate them at the same level that we are at the planning commission at the same time so that we can have productive conversations. You know, and part of it, too, just to be aware of, is, is coming up, you know, we're gonna, um, starting, I think, in April, we're gonna roll into start reviewing comprehensive plan goals and policies. And, you know, we essentially will be taking that to the planning commission and then the week after to the council. And so hopefully, you know, there, there will only be like a week lag time between what we're presenting to them, what we're, what, you know, we're getting, or what we're presenting to you and then what we're presenting to them and getting feedback on. So then we'll be able to have a little bit of a iterative process that's gonna be more in alignment time-wise um, than, than this last meeting was. So hopefully, that'll help take care of some of the, the lag. Um, and, and frankly, we just don't get a, we just don't get as much time in front of the, the council as we do in front of you to be able to, you know, get you up to speed. So um, unfortunately, it was kind of a, it, we kind of had to deal with that situation. And um, yeah, maybe it wasn't the best in terms of timing.
Okay, so let's go into the open house.
Yeah, so uh, from the open house, from the, kind of the staff perspective, I mean, overall, um, we were super satisfied with the, the turnout. Um, it, it was interesting that, you know, we were, we were happy with the turnout, but everybody seemed to turn out kind of all at one time, right? Yeah, so this, this room got packed really fast, um, right at, like, right after the doors opened at six. Well, we even had people in the room before six o'clock. Um, and so um, that, that was, it, it became, it was pretty loud in here. It was pretty warm and it became a little bit hard to navigate. So apologies for that, but that's a good problem to have because, you know, we could have had, I don't know, six people and made a plan that nobody showed up. So um, we're really happy with, with the turnout. And um, the, my, my general feeling was the people arrived, because I was working on the front kind of counter, um, is people arrived happy and they felt, felt, when they were leaving, they seemed like they were satisfied that they'd been heard. Um, so that, you know, I think was really successful on, on that standpoint. Um, I did ask people kind of where they heard of the, about the, um, the event. Most of them were through, like, social media or through our Lacey Life newsletter. So um, we, I think, did a really good job of getting the word out. There were some other things that were farther down the list when I asked people about that. But um, you know, the, the main thing for us as staff for this was to confirm, you know, we'd been doing a lot of outreach, as you're all aware, through the summer, into the fall, with the survey and making sure that before we move into this next phase where we're starting to write actually, like, the document, the goals and policies, is to confirm with the community that we were on the right track by presenting essentially kind of general information, not only about kind of what we'd heard, but also some concepts about, like, what direction we may be heading. And the feedback, I think, from all the staff that I talked to and the feedback that we got on the boards was, it was confirmed that, yes, we were headed in the right direction, very similar feedback that we'd gotten through the survey and those kinds of things. So I think for us, it was successful. It kind of put a, a little bit of a, um, you know, cherry on top of the sundae as far as just being, kind of finishing this phase of, of, um, of community outreach. Um, the next step will be actually people reviewing goals and policies, reviewing the actual plan. Um, so this was really about kind of making sure people were aware, what is a comp plan, how, how can you participate? You know, those kinds of things. The next will be actually reviewing the goals and policies. Um, so at this point, like I mentioned, you know, we're gonna take the information that we've gotten from the boards, the survey, um, all that information and start synthesizing that into goals and policies. And then those will start rolling out here in um, April to the planning commission. So.
Okay, so let's go. Get away, Robert.
Great. Um, I ended up being in the zoning area. Um, and I think a lot of it just was really reiterating what they were looking at. Oftentimes, it was just a lot of information, so really walking them through, like, yes, there was words on the paper, but even explaining the nuance of, like, this was a survey by people. So like, the applicability of it is not as easy to find as, like, yes, everyone wants, um, you know, housing in the wetland area, but like, that's not necessarily reasonable or realistic with, with the limitations. And so it was important to contextualize some of the conversations, but people had good questions. They, they, I felt like they um, really, it was helpful for us to get the kind of deep dive because it, it is hard to look at those three maps and immediately know where the differences are. So I was really grateful for the, the prep work that we had and, and getting prepped by the city to be able to talk about it. But um, yeah, I mean, no, like, scary feedback. It was all pretty, um, it was really productive. I mean, of course, there's always someone that kind of comes in and they'd come in on their, that project that they want to talk to you about. So they're somehow talking about something, nothing relating to zoning, but that, that happens everywhere. So.
Sure.
Yeah, I thought it was productive, constructive, and, and easy to talk to individuals.
Good, Elliot.
Um, yeah, it was interesting to me. How, how many different phases there, there were to, you know, different aspects? Some, some people were worried about the zoning and commercial versus residential. Some people were interested in the, the transit. Uh, some were interested in the um, commuting of traffic. I thought, I thought it was, I, I I thought we should have at least had some forms that we could fill out to remind us of what each person's concern was, but it was kind of like fast-paced.
Yeah.
We probably should have submitted a, something to help you guys know what the actual input was.
We got a lot of sticky notes. So for the, for the, those booths, they had a lot of sticky notes. We also had, um, everybody got um, a sheet to carry around with them and fill out. That's the, the, they were, there was a handout with tables in the middle with pens to be able to fill out. A lot of people dropped that in the boxes as well. So, you know, the, so people, I think, had the ability to provide that, that feedback. And we, we got that through this. So I think we're okay there. Yeah.
Elliot?
I thought it was an amazing turnout to see so many different people from the community, old, you know, our older uh, residents, as well as there was a very young gentleman who came through who wanted to participate in the evening. But that was amazing. But uh, there were some questions. Uh, some people were really curious about the proposed school site in the, the north and uh, what was actually going to go into those neighborhood commercials. And so um, I think it, you know, just understanding that we have to wait for people to actually want to develop those areas uh, was something that people were, were asking about, curious about. And uh, the one thing that I think that would have made the evening a little bit better is if the maps had landmarks because they were very confused, like, what exactly is this location or that location? So I might have helped people when they were asking their questions to understand the, the maps a little bit better. But it was a great evening.
Good. Good. You?
I thought it was really interesting. Um, it, and that some people came with sort of a general idea of looking at the whole thing. Some people came with specific issues, obviously. Um, I thought that the con, the overall comment was, that I got back from people was, it's great that you're doing this. I mean, that you're involving us early in some process. I thought, and that was a very appreciative sort of, yeah, I'm gonna go away and think about this kind of attitude. I didn't, I, I really didn't see anyone who had a sort of axe to grind or um, wasn't, wasn't open and receptive to what was going on. So, so the major, I think the major point is the more the doors are open for people to get their words in and, and understand what's going on, the better off we are. I thought it was, I thought it was a great event, actually.
Spencer?
I loved it. I was really grateful that the feedback I received in person here mirrored what we had received from the general surveys. So it was nice to hear it coming from people's mouths firsthand and get that confirmation that, yes, we are on the right page and that people are seeing this vision and they're reiterating it to us multiple times in a row, which makes me feel confident moving forward with what we're looking at right now, discussing these options. Um, and I'd love to see more of this on a reasonable schedule just in the future, because I, I like that check-in. I feel like that's the mandate we're given when we apply to this position and accept this position that we're supposed to be representing those people. So it's always nice to have that feedback.
I, I agree a hundred percent with that. I'd like to have more of these. Um, so my takeaway, I, I bounced from station to station just to kind of get an idea of what was going on. People do really like the fact that Lacey engages the citizens and that we ask for their feedback. And history has shown that we listen. Excuse me. So the overarching theme that I got, so talking to more experienced individuals, because I'm not gonna call them old, uh,
It's okay, we're good.
was that, that they, they wanted more access to what they needed closer to home.
Yes.
You know, light medical services. They know they can't get a hospital a quarter mile from their neighborhood, but what they want, light medical services. They want a market, you know, they want a small hardware store. And then talking to the younger people that were there, they want a place to work that's closer to home, right? They want to be able to bicycle or walk or, or, you know, a short transit. Um, they don't want to have to drive across town or to another town. So I think the overarching theme there was that they really want to see these neighborhood commercial areas built out to their potential so that they're not having to go so far. They don't mind, you know, going once a month to Costco for a major shopping trip, but in the meantime, they would really like to just go up the street. Yeah.
So um, appreciate all the feedback for sure. And, and it, it's good to hear all the positive comments. Um, and I do really appreciate that. I, I just wanted to, first of all, you know, thank the planning commission. Those were two very long and busy nights. Um, and so thank you so much for your participation. I think, you know, it's, it's great not only to talk, you know, obviously, you know, I have face-to-face time with the council and be able to talk directly to the council about these things, but also your kind of neighbors. And, you know, to have that connection um, with the, the residents to not only just talk to the staff, but have you all there too is, is a really, you know, fantastic thing. So um, so if, when we do more of that, we may bring you along, um, because that, that's a really powerful tool. Um, and I just wanted to make mention that um, we do still have the boards. They are up, up and available for anybody that wants to stop by and participate um, in city hall. So they're just right in our lobby here. You're welcome to, to um, view them at any time. We are going to be getting them up on our, um, what will be our future comprehensive plan website. So it's just for anybody that's watching that may want to see what was presented at the open house. That's at uh, www dot envision tomorrow lacy dot org. Um, and that should be up hopefully within the next week or two. And there will be an online ability to participate in the boards for people that weren't able to attend the open house. That was a frequent question I got at the meeting was, um, you know, hey, this is great. How do I, I want to get my neighbors this information or whatever. Um, that's a way to be, for them to be able to, to do that. So we'll share that. Once the boards have been posted, we'll share with all of our email contacts that that is now up and live. Um, it'll, it'll take us a little bit of time to get that up, but once it is, we'll send out an email notification. That will be the, the ability to participate through the website um, for people that weren't able to attend.
There were a lot of people, not a lot of people, but there were several people who came up and said, thank you for what you do. You know, thank you for volunteering, thank you for doing that, which was a little gratifying, but also, I mean, the right people were in the room. I, I, you know, because the people who are gonna say, a city doesn't do anything for me who didn't come to the room. But, but they, hopefully, they'll go out, talk to their neighbors and be ambassadors for, for the plan.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you, everybody. And thank you for all that could participate in either night. And, and, you know, life happens. You get sick, you're out of town, whatever. It, it's just, I just appreciate the people that were able to be here to be here. All right, we're on to old business. Veronica, talking about commuter production. No, no, remember, I purposely avoided using the word old.
Want the mouse?
Oh, sure.
Erin, you may want to, like, promote Samantha to a, so Samantha's one of our. Veronica, you might be able to do that. I do not do that on.
Ah, to promote.
Yeah, if you go to participants.
Or wait, I have to go here.
Attendees. Yeah. Go.
Oh, don't I just do a lot of talk or?
Go over to the right and then promote panelists. Yeah.
Okay.
Just in case.
I think I did that right, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, this is funny that I'd be running as soon. That's not my own.
Uh, it's too hard to. Oh, you didn't care on it.
No, we'll save that then. Okay, great. And I will. Okay. This is the right person. Yes. Okay. I think I just, she, she moved while it was clicking. Okay. Now I need to get to the X in here.
You can X out of that one.
Yeah, that's a good one. This is really funny though.
I know, it happened too soon.
Yeah. Okay. Mutation. And welcome to the. Yes, I think I'm in business. All right. Um, okay, I'll, uh, I think I'll orient myself this way. There's lots of people online. Um, so I'll introduce myself. We'll introduce ourselves really quick and then uh, launch into a PowerPoint. We have basically some background on commuter production and then we have an update on what we're. We have basically some background on commuter production and then we have an update on what we're the project we're doing right now, which is updating a planning document. And then we'll allow some time for questions, um, if you guys should have any. Uh, but just to quickly introduce myself, I'm Veronica Jarvis and I run the commuter production program for the region. Uh, all the jurisdictions that participate for the regions, so Thurston County, Olympia, Lacey and Tumwater. Um, and I've been doing that for about five years and um this is my colleague, George.
I'm George Castillo, I'm assistant planner, I've been working on CTR for the past six months.
He's very new. Um, so we'll we'll take you through um our presentation and as I said, it will be a little bit of education first. I feel like you queued us up super well, hearing from people uh at your outreach event that said they want to live close to where they work and just take a bike ride, walk or um bus to where they're going. Um, that's what we do. Is we try and make sure people have the resources to get to where they want to go in um in active transportation way or on the bus or um however they want to get there or find ways to have them get there less often, such as telework, flexible work, things like that. So I will go ahead.
So, yes. Yeah. So Washington State's commuter reduction law, you know, it was enacted in nineteen ninety-one as part of the Clean Air Act. Um, it requires employers in urban areas with a hundred plus employees or more to have alternative commute options other than single vehicle occupancy. Uh, employers must create and submit their CTR program report every two years. We have just worked on that lately. And it affects work sites in designated urban areas to encourage things such as carpooling, public transit, biking, walking, telework, anything that stops them from using single vehicle occupancy.
And so just a quick note on one of the um requirements here, it says requires large employers. Uh, Thurston County is special and unique as we are, um, because in our county only, it affects all state agencies. So uh the Horse Racing Commission doesn't have a hundred employees, but they are affected, they have like five. Um, they are affected by the CTR law. So instead of having a bunch of large uh companies in our program here in Thurston County, we tend to have large, medium sized, small sized, so we have about a hundred and eighty work sites, which is quite a few, and it makes us have sort of comparable programs to some of the larger areas. But it I, we put that up there because that is specifically in the law for the rest of the state, but we here in Thurston County do have a little bit of a different program and deal with all those state agencies. It's a little easier because they are all state agencies, so they have a little more homogeneity, but nonetheless, it's still a lot of things to track.
So Lacey, Olympia and Tumwater all have their own CTR ordinance. So it aims to reduce traffic congestion and improve air quality among the community. As you can see, chapter ten forty-six is Lacey's municipal code for CTR reduction, uh CTR law. Um, employers with a hundred full-time employees between six AM and nine PM have to develop and implement a CTR program. And the ordinance has specific requirements for employers, including appoint uh appointing ETCs, so employee transportation coordinators that help employees in the agency or the business uh find alternatives uh to single vehicle occupancy.
Yeah, and so this is an example of Lacey's, the seat, the state CTR law required each jurisdiction that is affected by the law to have their own ordinance. So not only is there the state law, Lacey has their own specific law that uh affects um their jurisdiction and Olympia, Tumwater, Thurston County also have their own. Um, so it it's a requirement for each jurisdiction that's part of the program.
So here are here are CTR survey results for Lacey. As you can see right here at the bottom, how is your staff commuting to work? Uh, fifty-six percent work from home.
And this is fifty-four six percent of the all the jur- all all the work sites in Lacey.
And you can see thirty-nine percent drive alone and the five percent are doing other. So think uh public transit, uh biking, walking, that kind of thing.
Yeah, and if you would have looked at this five years ago, it would have been uh drive alone, definitely eighty percent, eighty-five percent. Um, and then the rest, the others um at very small slices, all on their own too. And work from home would have been one of those small slices, so just a a big difference in the shift of how uh people are getting around, which is a surprise to no one. But I wanted to make sure and point out that this is, this looks really different than it used to. And and the reason uh in Lacey, you guys do have more um of the manufacturing facilities um in in the area, but you still have a lot of state agencies which do make up that work from home rate. Um, the manufacturing facilities actually generally clearly insistent.
Very, I'm very sorry. We'll never do this again.
Um, those manufacturing facilities um out in like the Hawksbury Industrial Art Park in that area, a lot of them actually don't start work in the out, the the requirement of the CTR law is six to nine and a lot of them don't start at that right time. And so it's unfortunate, we've tried to provide services to them regardless. We always take anybody on that wants to be a voluntary work site and provide information. And if they want to serve their their employees, happy to have them. Um, but for the large part, um, they have declined that offer. Um, but uh happy to give more details on any specific work sites at any time if anyone's interested.
Oh, yeah. Branca, a quick question on my end, what was the date of that survey?
So that was at the end of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Uh, yep, yep.
And then we have to do it every two years?
Do it every two years, we'll do it um at the end of twenty twenty-five.
Okay. It'll be interesting to kind of watch the work from home part of that.
Well, we'll shift back.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Spencer, question, yes. So how are employers submitting this? Is there a digital form that they send in or?
Yep. Every, and so George, you want to talk a little bit more about the requirements of an ETC and that'll sort of launch us into how they
Jump the gun.
Yeah, no, you're fine. It's a good question.
So every CTR uh has an employer or who's a skinny. So everyone is appointed an uh ETC, so employee transportation coordinator. Um, the ETC will talk to the A- TRPC and they'll they'll fill out information, letting us know like, oh, how many people at this work site are commuting? How many people are remote working? How many people are biking? They'll fill out a program report, they'll say information like, you know, how many showers do they have? So how many portable, uh, excuse me, how much, how many rechargeable stations they have for EV vehicles, things like that. So an ETC will basically promote sustainable commuting options. Uh, they'll report the requirements of, report towards requirements of the CTR law and they'll also offer support and training available as well, which they can also go through us for assistance too. So I'll help um ETCs from different agencies or private sector employers, like, oh, this is how you can be compliant with the CTR law.
Yeah, and to your question, we have uh statewide tools that we use, a state a statewide CTR uh survey tool platform that we use as um the survey and uh for uh employers that are submitting their program reports. But the survey tool is used by um the ETC to like, they send it out to all their employees and um each work site uh tries to get to a specific percentage of their employees. And um they're doing their best, I, just an example of like, you know, St. Peter's Hospital. Uh, a lot of those folks don't have a great chance to fill out a survey when they're walking around taking care of patients. So we do our best, but we don't always make all the goals. Um, but that is one of the larger work sites in the area, they have around thirty-five hundred employees at the last count. So um the ETC there is fantastic and goes around and brings a QR code to the survey to to like people in the hallways and tries to get them to do the survey. So it's heroic efforts to get people to survey, but it it can be really challenging. It's a pretty quick sur- excuse me, survey too, it's like five questions and um just trying to find out how people are commuting on a daily basis. And that's um to your point of how it's looking now with working from home, we did start collecting data on day, by day of the week. We used to say, how do you generally commute in the in the week? And now we're really doing it by day of week because people are choosing so differently every day. I work in the office Tuesdays, sometimes a Friday, so I'd fill that out differently every day. You know, I'd telework those other days, so it's, it captures the data better, which is exciting. Uh, so probably gave me more information than you wanted to know, but Um, so why we're here tonight is, um, I mean, we're always happy to talk about CTR and if you ever want to hear about it again, I'll come. But um, but the reason we are here tonight and, you know, you you guys are clearly up to speed on your comprehensive plans, which are updated every ten years. Commuter production has a requirement for local plans and they're supposed to be updated every four years. The last time we did it was around twenty-ten and we kept getting extensions because we said, oh, they're still still relevant, still fine. But now we are doing a wholesale update to them. So um it, this is something that's uh required by um RCW. And and really the goal of these plans is to try and make sure that the goals of the commuter production program are integrated into the local planning. Like, is your CTR ordinance working? Are you doing the things you said in your ordinance? Some people are also using this as an opportunity to update their ordinance. Um, there hasn't been a a ton of changes in uh the Lacey ordinance. Um, that I, you know, it would require changes there, so I I don't think um you've taken that route, but you're always, you know, welcome to, I don't have to tell you how to change your ordinances, but um some people are taking this as an opportunity to um match up with the local plan. Um, as part of this, the development of this plan, we've consulted with uh the local transit agencies, so intercity transit, the RTPO, Regional Transportation Planning Organization, which is TRPC, the major employers in the area and other interested parties. And I did show a picture of um myself with intercity transit staff at the Capitol. We work super closely with intercity transit staff. They have an incredible transit system, obviously, but they also run the walk and roll program in the area and have a lot of great promotions for biking. Um, so incredible partner. Um, and as part of developing the plan, we did a ton of outreach to our um employers and those affected by the work sites in their communities. So an interesting way, uh, you know, if you, it was tough to do outreach for this plan because, you know, you're asking the work site um what they want to do to see different in their community, but really the people that are affected by maybe the pollution at that work site are the people that live by the work site. So we did also target, you know, by specific neighborhoods of people that were near large CTR work sites. So we really did try and go out of our way to make sure we were getting to everyone that we could think of that is affected by, you know, pollution from cars, which is one of the goals of the program. So I did read a lot of your uh Capitol improvement plans and your comprehensive plans and a lot of your planning documents. Um, and this is all small font, but I really just wanted to show examples of um some, you know, your projects you do as a community are really helping commuters. And picked out several, worked with your staff, Hans, and um just thinking about things that'll help people get to work, you know, get to school and get to get to those places in a a better way of walking and biking that they want to do. And so it's it's a way of viewing the things you're already doing and seeing how they fit into uh helping people get to work and get to school. So a lot of great projects coming up.
Yeah, you know, that has been my observation since CTR first started, right? Is that it's a noble plan. But for the most part, the infrastructure required to actually make it happen isn't there.
Yes.
You know, and and one of the things that we have in Western Washington is we get a lot of rain. So, you know, convenient bike lanes aren't necessarily an option. And our transit system unfortunately isn't funded to the point where they've reached their goal of fifteen-minute service to everyone.
Right.
From my, for for instance, for me, when I was working up at the courthouse for, I I lived by the fairgrounds, it would take me an hour and a half to get to work.
Yeah.
And even now that we've moved to Pacific Avenue, it would still take me forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
With a transfer at the Lacey Transit Center, so it's not, it's not quite there yet.
Yep. Yep, absolutely agree. And and working through the challenges of helping people find their best commute can sometimes mean saying, hey, can you carpool with your friend from work? You know, um, I'm a, I'm a biker, I'm a huge advocate for biking. It's a, I I will bike almost anytime. I biked last week to an event um at the hospital at six AM. It was really dark, it was really rainy and it was really cold. I don't want to do that again. And and it's fair that if your shift starts at six AM, that's probably not a great option. But there is carpooling, there's van pooling, things like that, where there's a lot of people that work on the same shift. It really can make a lot of sense to have those options and where you start to see that as a great savings as an employer is you can build less parking and things like that. And and when you guys were talking about land use, it sounds like you guys are already making that connection. When you're building huge parking lots, um, you know, I look at uh South Sound Center, maybe, I don't know if it's still called that, but you know, the target there and I think, man, there's so much parking. Could we put housing? How do we make those things more mixed use when there's already parking there, you know? Um, so we don't have to build more, but that's a lot of the things we talk about in CTR too. Um, and uh dynamic parking pricing so that you can be using the the best and highest use for that land. Um, so uh as I mentioned, we did work with a lot of folks and uh worked with city staff and then transit staff and did outreach on the plan to make sure that we were coordinating with the city um and other partners to be on the same page as this, uh to include uh the regional transportation plan, the TRPC uh drafts, that draft is coming out here in a couple of months. Um, but as you said, you guys are working on your your comprehensive plan, IT has their strategic plan. Um, and you guys have um several plans that affect um a lot of just how things are connected in your neighborhoods. And that's, it's huge for commuters. Uh, as I said, by commuter and biker, it, sometimes when you can find a good neighborhood cut through, that can be great and it sounds like you guys are already thinking of those kind of connections and making uh people do want to walk to an ice cream place fifteen minutes away. You said hardware store, I said ice cream place, you know?
Whatever.
That's what I wanted to coffee shop, you know, they really, they do, you're absolutely right. And um finding those ways where they can uh, you know, get around your street network is super important. Um, so anyways, we are, we put these plans together, they have a process they have to go through, they've already been approved by WashDOT. We're um taking this to you guys as sort of like a informational um sharing, but uh we're also taking it to your city council uh for approval, I think, in a few weeks. So um I think with that, we are happy to take any other questions or anything you want to know about. We're happy to also just talk about CTR.
Um, one one of these programs, businesses in Washington a lot of times grow when a new program comes on. It's like Washington builds these programs and then guess what, you're paying for them as a business. So they did have the commute tax reduction tax credit, but that's only extended through June of thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, that's a, this is a great thing to bring up.
How how many businesses actually took advantage of that tax credit? Because we usually don't need a tax credit any more than on businesses with the losses going on in major businesses.
Yeah, so that tax credit is largely used by the larger employers in Seattle. Uh, as the uh, I mentioned, most of our uh work sites are state agencies and so they can't get a tax credit. So, but um you're right, it does expire in twenty twenty-five. There is a bill with the legislature right now to extend that for ten years and to lower the amount of the tax credit cap so that more more businesses could get that. Um, and it it, so it's a, for those of you that maybe are a less familiar, it's like if if you're in Seattle and you provide your employee an ORCA card to get to work to comply with a commuter production program, then you can get a tax credit on um providing that benefit to your employees. Um, so they are looking at extending that credit though.
But the tax credit was only sixty dollars per employee per year, so that doesn't really offset the cost.
Probably not, depending on your area. Here, we have free transit, so you don't need to uh provide that service, but there's also like van pools and things like that. Yes, it it is sixty dollars in there. I think they were, the new bill update, I forget what they were changing it to, but you're right, it it's not perfect. It's been, but it has uh been around for quite some time too. Uh, and getting uh the roads clear of uh commuters that are, can get in a more efficient um manner to work, so carpools, vanpools and clearing those roads of congestion does help businesses grow by having less congestion. So that's one of the things the program has always thought about is we can make more money for our economy locally if we have less congestion.
Nobody are using against that, but um right now we're seeing a coming trend within businesses to bring employees back into the offices. So, you know, Amazon, Yahoo, you know, the list kind of goes on because they're finding that they're a lot more productive in office. And the tax credit really doesn't help them achieve their their goals. And the tax credit really doesn't help them achieve their their goals.
It can still apply to them in the sense of things like van pool as well as there's other ways to get that besides telework. I agree that sixty dollars is not a substantial amount of money to make that any sort of incentive for an employer.
Especially when they have to allocate resources, but that comes along to answer all of them.
Right, there's enough to ESS data.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I actually, that was my question, that this this whole new return to office because you might be dead and still getting a paycheck. Is, is that, uh, do you notice that in in Thurston County? Uh, or is it not happening here as much as it might in Seattle?
We really haven't yet. And and I say that because we have the, we can historically look at our CTR survey results. Um, we haven't seen that um influx yet. I do think it could be different the next time we survey, as Ryan mentioned, at the end of twenty twenty-five. But since we have such a large population of state employees and thinking through your larger work sites in Lacey, I mean, you have the Department of Ecology and things like that. And they have, not only that, a lot of more agencies are starting to co-locate. So they actually have more employees in one place, they're filling up real estate, which is also a good and efficient use of tax dollars. Um, we ha, we haven't seen them come back yet. I do think we'll see some differences in.
Of course, a hospital, it's hard to telecommute, but you know.
Exactly.
In other places, it's easier, you know? Just wondering if that, you know, boat is rowing in a different direction on the stream these days.
Yeah, I think most of the state agencies are still allowing a lot of flexibility. And one thing we also talk about in the commuter production program is like, if you don't have to be there right at eight, can you wait until later and not cause the congestion on our road, stagger your start times?
Shift staggering.
Absolutely, yeah, there's a lot of different methods you can use.
We've, we've actually seen it, um, you know, are we, we do, you know, the the host counters that go across the roads, you know? So we do the the traffic counts and so we're able to see at least the number of cars on the road. Granted, it's a little bit different than the CTR program and what that monitors. But um, you know, what we've seen is um, is there used to be a a definite AM peak and a PM peak. So, and and now those have shifted a little bit. And really, there is a now, which didn't exist before, is a midday peak.
Right, yeah.
As well, so um, you know, especially with with people, you know, maybe working from home for whatever reason, running errands, those kinds of things. There's now, you know, maybe they're not like necessarily getting in their car and coming to work in the morning or leaving in the afternoon. But they're in the mid, middle of the day, they're in their car. So it's it's kind of interesting how that's shifting a little bit.
Yeah.
Great, thank you both very much.
Thank you guys for being an audience and your great service to the community. Love it, I appreciate that.
All right, Jennifer, middle housing.
Are you guys tired of talking about middle housing?
Haven't seen you for days, Jennifer.
It was really nice to see uh those of you who made it to the open house. We already, Ryan covered that, you all covered that, that was really, really great to have you there, so thank you. Just the survey results, right?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, please.
Just the survey results.
Yeah. You know. This is gonna, thanks, my side, okay. Is there a?
Or icon from the left. Slideshow, yeah. Start from the beginning, yeah, click on it.
Oh, there it is, okay. Thanks, guys. Okay, well, welcome to another session of middle housing. And uh, let's see, I'm gonna do uh double remotes here tonight because I have my notes this time on on my computer. So, um, so I did, I did want to note that uh unfortunately, I neglected to include just kind of a reminder slide um for us that as a two-tiered, as a tier-two city, um, for Lacey, that means that, again, we have to allow uh a minimum of two middle housing units uh per eligible lot. Um, and then up to four if one of those units is reserved at the affordable uh affordable rate. So, just keeping that in mind as we go forward. So, um, anyways, uh, really excited to be here tonight and just kind of share some uh survey results uh with you. So, um, so to start, um, let's go ahead and review the definition of middle housing. So according to the states, um, to the RCW, middle housing refers to a range of multi-unit or clustered housing types that are compatible in scale with single-family homes. Um, these include duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, fiveplexes, sixplexes. Say that ten times really fast. Uh, townhomes, stacked flats, courtyard apartments, and then cottage housing clusters. Um, and what these primarily have in common is they are considered uh housing options that fall somewhere between sing, single-family housing and then larger apartment complex facilities.
Is there any of these that the city is not allowing currently? Because it says we only have to have six of the nine, is there any that have been ruled out?
Yes, and 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 we're gonna hopefully kind of dive into that here in just a minute. But yes, so so currently, we do um have several of these already allowed in our code.
No, not allowed. So it says we have to do six of the nine, can we do all nine types or have we blocked any currently?
Ryan, do you have a complete answer for that?
Yeah, so uh, kind of, it depends on the zone, I guess, is kind of the underlying answer. So, um, you know, essentially, those are allowed in probably our kind of more moderate and high-density zones right now. In our low-density, like, single-family residential zone, we allow up to a triplex. So, a and that's on any lot of record, and Jennifer, I think we'll go into that in a little bit more detail.
Yeah.
So, like, in a single-family zone right now, we don't allow for a fourplex, fiveplex, or sixplex. But we we do allow essentially up to a triplex. It could be in a townhouse configuration, so it could have property lines running down it or not. Um, it can be in a stacked flat configuration, which is kind of like, instead of being kind of more horizontal units, it's more kind of vertical. Um, we do allow for um a courtyard apartment, whi, which would be kind of a a U shape. And then we also allow for cottage housing. So really, the only ones we don't allow are the fourplex to sixplex variety in our single-family zones.
Well, Ryan, great, thank you, because you just kind of, kind of.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
You just kind of covered the the next slide for me, so I'm just gonna skip ahead a little, a little bit, uh, but backtrack uh just for a second, which is there again that um we need to essentially make sure that when we adopt our citywide ordinance, that we are uh adopting a minimum of, oh, we are adopting six of nine um to remain in com, compliance with the new regulations for middle housing. So, um, as was just discussed here, um, I was just gonna say, um, you know, let's take a moment to review what what Lacey already does allow. Um, this is particular, this slide here reflects um our low-density residential district, uh, which permits, there again, uh, four of these types that we've been talking about. So, uh, cottage housing, townhomes, duplexes, and triplexes. And we are seeing uh quite a few of those, I would say, uh, developed uh throughout different neighborhoods um in Lacey. So, um, some of these housing types are then also allowed in other zone districts where residential uh uses are primary uses. Um, however, larger multifamily units such as apartments may have, you know, historically been meeting some of of the housing uh needs in some of these higher, higher-density zones.
So, is the six of nine requirement citywide or for each type of zoning?
I knew that question was gonna come.
Our read on that is each type of zoning.
Okay.
So each type of zone, and it and it could slide, like, the more kind of dense you get, you get, you could start at like the lowest end and say, hey, just in our single-family zones, we're gonna allow up to a fourplex. Then the next step up, we're gonna allow it to a fiveplex, and then the next step up from that, we're gonna allow it to a sixplex. Kind of the, to fit kind of better the scale and the idea of the zoning category. I think you can have, we have some flexibility of what of those six we apply to that individual zone.
Okay.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, so anyway, again, now our task is to essentially start building on this great foundation that that we already have uh started to develop here in Lacey, um, in order to meet these new requirements of the state. Um, so I wanted to go ahead and uh talk a little bit about the survey tonight. So, uh, some of you may remember because I've talked about it, or maybe you even had a chance to participate. But uh during the months of November and December of twenty twenty-four, um, the city initiated a community survey specific to middle housing varieties. Um, wi, with the purpose of uh hoping to hear from our community about their priorities for housing types. And keeping in mind that this is a requirement, it was still uh really critical to get uh as much feedback as we could to help us move forward um in our planning process here uh with middle housing. Um, and we wanted to see uh which types of housing people might be more likely to embrace. Um, so the city used, uh, pretty much used our usual uh methods uh for survey and community outreach to spread the word about the opportunity to participate in the survey. Um, common methods were, uh, you know, many Facebook posts and Instagram posts and even shout-outs in the uh Lacey Live online publication. Um, and there again, that was to, you know, just alert people of this opportunity, uh, drive them to the website where uh the survey was being housed. And then we also, in addition, got to thinking, you know, we should probably target um parcels in town that are probably most suitable um to achieve middle housing. Um, and so we put our heads together on that and we went ahead and did a mailer that reached um over three thousand properties. Um, and again, that mailer, which I think was just on the last slide, uh, targeted uh parcels in what you're seeing, kind of these dark little speckled dots up here. So, uh, just, you know, kind of high level, we'll assume that, you know, there's probably more of uh an opportunity for middle housing development in uh the south, south end of Lacey opposed uh to the north end there. But anyway, this included uh low-density residential as well as moderate-density residential. And then some additional criteria for establishing uh who that survey uh notification went to. Um, was parcels were ten thousand square feet or larger, um, with inside the city limits, of course, and then also within two hundred feet um of an active sewer so, sewer source. And so that was what we tried to target there. And, uh, you know, overall, I think, uh, feel like we were fair, have been fairly pleased with uh the response rate that that we received. Um, so we did uh take in a total of three hundred and sixty-one uh survey responses, uh, with three hundred and thirty-three respondents identifying as residents of the city of Lacey, and then twenty-eight indicating that they lived outside of the city limits. Uh, while it is valuable to hear from our broader community, it's important to highlight that the middle housing mandates only apply within Lacey's incorporated city limits. Um, and, you know, this, there again, just means that our zoning updates will directly impact properties within our boundaries, but not in the unincorporated areas of Thurston County. Um, so, and just to highlight, you know, understanding who our respondents are is always helpful to help uh for gauging how representative the feedback is um of those directly affected uh or who could be directly affected by these policy changes. Um, this also reinforces the need for continued engagement to ensure that Lacey residents, um, especially those in areas most likely to see these types of changes are informed and uh can continue to have opportunities um to provide input. Um, so it's always nice as well to share, you know, who do, who did we primarily hear from? Um, so collecting demographic data in a survey like this is also important because it helps us understand, there again, who's participating in the conversation and whether their response reflects the broader diversity within our community. Uh, the results showed that uh the majority of respondents were female. Um, the majority of respondents were white or Caucasian. Um, and then a large, large age range here, but majority respondents were thirty-five to uh sixty-five. Um, and then household incomes uh showed a majority respondents there of seventy-five thousand annually and above. Um, so while this data does give us some useful insight into the perspectives of those who engaged in the survey, um, it also highlights potential gaps. Um, for example, we know uh typically that younger residents, renters, and then uh those with lower incomes um often do face the greatest housing challenges, uh yet their voices are often underrepresented in surveys of this kind. Um, so I think this is good for us just knowing uh and recognizing these limitations so that, again, as we move forward with middle housing, if there are more opportunities uh for community engagement, um, if there are more opportunities for any more surveying, this will help, you know, give us some information about how we can proceed and and take a look at those gaps. Um, and pretty simply, we used a a star rating system in our survey. Um, so to gauge our public sentiment, uh, we went with the the kind of a classic five-star rating scale. Um, a rating of five stars indicated a strong approval, while a rating of one star indicate, indicated a strong disapproval. Um, and this scale allowed uh respondents to express varying levels of support or concern, giving a clearer picture of overall community preferences for housing types that people would be most comfortable with. So we're gonna go ahead and take a look at these now. Uh, because we already uh allow duplexes and triplexes, we see those often. I didn't, we did not include those in the survey, but we did start uh our survey off with the fourplex. So we're just gonna run through these. Um, and what you see here is what was reflected on the survey. So we chose kind of this palette of of housing sketches, um, uh, just for standardization, simplicity, and then also to avoid becoming biased with details of design, uh, colors, things like that, that that, you know, can easily catch our eye and and get us off track a bit. So, um, this is sort of what the survey looked like, a very simple definition of each housing type. And then, if you can see in the very corner there, I'll probably be referring to these uh star ratings in the corner as well. Um, so here we have the example of fourplexes indicated on the, on the survey with the definition. Um, on our rating scale, fourplexes received an average rating of two point nine stars, indicating a fairly mixed response from the community, neither strong approval nor strong disapproval overall. Um, and this suggests that while some residents are open to seeing four, fourplexes in their neighborhoods, others likely have some concerns. And then moving on to fiveplexes, uh, same thing here with the definition provided. Uh, fiveplexes received an average rating of two point three two stars on our rating scale, indicating lower overall support compared to fourplexes. Um, so we can look at this and uh it may suggest that as the building size increases, uh, the community becomes less comfortable, um, you know, with with that size and ratings decrease, approval ratings decrease, um, which is an important consideration as we evaluate what what types of housing, um, you know, to to integrate here in Lacey. And then moving right on into the sixplex here with the same sort of layout. Um, the sixplex received an average rating of two point two one stars, uh, which was the lowest rating so far. And here again, this continues the trend of decreasing support as the number of units increase, suggesting perhaps that larger middle housing types may face greater community resistance. Um, understanding these perspectives is is important, um, as we consider uh there again, how we're going to move forward with what and how we're going to implement uh the the decisions that we're going to make. And then townhouses, and though we've already uh established that Lacey already allows town, townhouses, and we see men, we see a lot of that here in our community. Um, the feedback on townhomes is still important to uh the overall approval analysis. Um, townhomes received an average rating of two point nine four stars, making them one of the more favorably rated middle housing types in the survey. This is actually interesting because like fourplexes or even fiveplexes, townhomes can still have that same number of units. Um, however, there are a few possible reasons why townhomes may receive higher support from our community. Uh, first, townhomes uh are typically designed with individual entrances and private outdoor spaces, uh, which can make them feel more like s, single-family homes. Uh, second, they often have a more traditional streetscape appearance, um, aligning with what residents may already be familiar with in in many of our neighborhoods. Um, and then finally, uh, ownership may play a role in ratings as well, right? So, since townhomes are often sold individually rather than rented as a single unit, um, they may be perceived as a more stable or desirable housing type um compared to some of the uh plex uh style um options. And then stacked flats, you know, this, this may sound new to some of us and and maybe not. Um, yeah, so uh, so next up was um the stacked flats. And uh stacked flats are are, I don't believe, common here in Lacey. Um, but they received an average rating of two point four nine stars, um, higher than some of the plex-style housing options uh we surveyed people on. Um, this could suggest that while residents may be less familiar with stacked flats, they all, they may also perceive them as more compatible with existing neighborhoods compared to some of those larger plex options. So, one possible reason for this could be that stacked flats can often resemble a townhome um or a townhouse, uh, style, right? Um, and typically, in a stacked flat, as the name implies, we're looking at. we're looking at more height as opposed to more lot, lot area used. So stacked flats also historically have provided easier pathways toward unit ownership or or homeownership, if you will, than some of the traditional plexes like fiveplexes and sixplexes. And then other reasons for higher approval could consider more things such as a more accessible layout because you would be occupying one floor instead of negotiating multiple floors, which is more traditional with a town, traditional townhome style. And then also, in addition, you know, they may have design opportunities that would allow them to blend well in existing neighborhoods, more so than than again, some of those six, five and six plex options. And just a couple to go here. So courtyard apartments was up next. And these received a two point five star rating, which is slightly higher than some of the plex style options. This could suggest that while they are not overwhelmingly popular, they may be viewed more favorably than like, you know, larger multi-unit buildings such as apartment complexes and things like that. Typically, though, courtyard apartments include and also may be oriented around a shared open space. So increasing their sense of community compared to other traditional apartment layouts, they are very popular in a lot of, a lot of cities. Often they tend to be lower in height, which may could, you know, that could help them blend into neighborhoods depending on how they're designed. There is quite a bit of research about the effectiveness of courtyard apartments, creating functional connections between the building and and other shared spaces, outdoor and indoor shared spaces. But it's important to know that research also strongly suggests that this middle housing variety tends to function best in highly dense populated city cores. And that is really due to some of those essential things such as available transit, you know, walkable infrastructure and essential services being nearby. And then last on, on the housing, you guys are troopers. Thank you so much for hanging in there with me on this. So last on the housing was cottage housing. We know that yes, Lacey does allow and promote cottage housing. And so it received the highest rating in our survey. So with an average of a three point two, four stars, this suggests strong community support for this type of housing. As we discussed, Lacey already allows the cottage housing, which may contribute to its higher approval rating because people are becoming familiar with how it can look and feel. And cottage housing may also be favorably viewed because it, each individual unit maintains a smaller footprint of its own. And a sense of community is often provided through the way that it is designed. And it's typically designed around, you know, some kind of a shared common or open space as well. So we are starting to see this become more of a popular approach to, to housing.
Question, would that be what they're building at Deutereau and Martin? Where Meridian crosses over, goes from Meridian to Deutereau.
It's outside of the city limits, but I I kind of generally know what you're talking about. It's, it's a large scale cottage housing development. So it is, so for those that don't know, it's oriented, it's smaller units oriented around essentially a green space in the middle. So like where you see the cluster on the left, that's, that's kind of what I think of as typical cottage housing. But it's like cottage housing on a, on a large scale. So I don't know how many units there are oriented around that middle space. The units themselves are relatively small and a lot of them actually have like garages with accessory dwelling units as well.
That they've been promoting that they come with ADUs already built.
Right, so that's, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, we've got two cottage developments years ago in the seventies. One is off Diamond Ridge Drive off Carpenter there and one is off of Rutherford.
So yeah, th- those are older ones. If you want to see anything that's, I would say relatively new, the the Deovista Habitat for Humanity project that's on thirty seventh across from Mucha Middle School is one. And then there is one, while it's not oriented around a, a green space. There's one that's west of College Street on like nineteenth Avenue or twentieth Avenue. We can get you the details of that one if you want to drive by. That one was done the last five, six years or so.
Okay, so we covered our cottage housing. Okay, so let's go ahead then and look comparatively. So here we can more easily compare the survey results with just a very simple graph approach. So considering the line of neutrality that you're seeing there across sort of the number three, and we see that most housing options rated at or below neutral in sentiment. We can simplify ratings below three as perhaps less favorable. And then the same would apply above the line of neutrality where we could then suggest that ratings three and above would be seen as more favorable options to the community. So we see in the graph that cottage housing and townhouses were the highest rated in the community survey. And Lacey, guess what, already allows those, right? I'm going to do this and you guys are going to say, we already allow this. Practice this. Okay, so and then, so a close third is fourplexes. And then stacked flats and courtyard apartments being less favorable than fourplexes. But as you can see here, more favorable than five and sixplexes. And then the last set of questions that we asked our community through the survey regarded their comfort level with building height. So we asked about three-story and four-story buildings in neighborhoods. So here, here you can see that given the line of neutrality, that responses were similar for both three and four-story residential structures with more unfavorable responses than we had favorable responses kind of across the board. Kind of, kind of get it, right? So building height will need to be given more consideration. We're going to need to continue to have conversations as, as we further our planning process. And, you know, that as we get more into design standards and scale and and things like that. But I do think this is still good baseline information for us to put in our memory banks and come back to when we're ready for those, those conversations. And then I did want to share with, with you that we did leave an opportunity for people to just provide general feedback. So we had, we were kind of encouraged to see a hundred and seventy-one people take time to provide us with comments, which I was able to take and sort of categorize into a couple of main buckets. So these are the three sort of high-level themes. The general sentiment bucket, these comments reflected broad opinions about middle housing, ranging from general support or opposition to neutral observations about how it might impact our community. For example, you see here, resistance to higher density and concern for existing property values. Concern over developer-driven decisions. But also, though it was a minority response, there was support for ADUs, which weren't part of this survey, but people did express their approval of ADUs, duplexes and cottage-style housing. So that was good to see. And then in our top concerns bucket, many responses highlighted concerns such as parking, neighborhood compatibility, infrastructure capacity, tree retention, green space preservation. And then a high amount of overall skepticism as to whether or not middle housing is going to actually provide a wider range of affordability for our community. And then in our last bucket, support for middle housing. So some respondents expressed support for middle housing, which was also great to see, citing things like the need for more diversity of housing choice, which we're here talking about tonight. Praise for, you know, let's get some smaller footprints going with the opportunity for hopefully purchasing, right? Homeowner purchase at a smaller scale. And then just simply having these conversations about addressing some infill opportunities through innovative approaches and having lots of voices at the table to see what we can do. And so finally, based on the survey results, based on other community feedback that our department has been doing for the last almost a year now at different local pop, pop-up events and and other city events. And then, you know, existing development patterns here in Lacey. So planning staff is here tonight to recommend the adoption of the following middle housing types. We already do that. So, so duplexes, triplexes, townhouses, houses, cottage houses. So we're up to four already. And planning staff is here tonight with a recommendation to include fourplexes and stacked flats.
Just maybe if I can clarify just a little bit. So the next steps in this process are that we are going to be drafting actually code language. And so before we go and do that, you know, obviously we have the survey results, but we want to touch base with the planning commission to make sure. Because the state law says you need to allow six of the nine. And really here, we're talking about, we're just starting with our, our low-density residential zones out of the, out of the box. And so we want to check in with the planning commission and see, okay, what, what are your thoughts in terms of, you know, if we start writing this code? You know, what six out of the nine options would you prefer? And this is what we as staff are recommending out of the box, but definitely want to take any kind of feedback that you have at this point to see if, if you want to go a different direction. So, you know, as Jennifer mentioned, we already allow those top four, but we are also saying including fourplexes. If we allowed fourplexes, one is required to be affordable. So keep that in mind and that's part of the state law. And then the other additional one would be stacked flats. And the, the thing I think about stacked flats is they're not different than, for example, a duplex or triplex that's side by side. It's basically turning that on its side and and going vertical instead of horizontal. So it's already something that we would probably already kind of allow. We don't specifically call it out in our code. But, you know, a duplex for us or a triplex for us is the same, whether it's turned on its edge or right side up, you know, it doesn't really matter.
So first of all, with the four that are already allowed, what is the consensus of the group as, as far as continuing those fours? Is there thumbs up, thumbs downs?
I think that's already the character of our community and we should stick with it.
Good. So then adding fourplexes and stacked flats.
Think of the options that are the ones that again, I think it most closely aligns with the character of the community and still provides compliance as well as some increased density, so.
Thumbs up.
Yeah, I think there's a great argument for that stacked flat idea because someone who doesn't want to live in a situation, they go up and down, up and down all the time. They go up once and then they live
Exactly.
And that's great. That's a great option.
I would put the caveat of the parking because, you know, look at all these, we're getting much smaller lots with bigger buildings and tons of cars, no place to park. And it's causing division within the neighborhood, a lot of problems. If you're a maintenance guy like me, it's, it's a nightmare just to try to park somewhere.
So if you're interested in your perspective, I agree, you got to have adequate parking for what you're developing, right? But my perspective has always been, developer knows if they want to attract either a buyer or a tenant, they're going to have to provide what's necessary from their end. If they choose not to provide parking, they're not going to attract customers.
Not necessarily. They're, they're going to build whatever is profitable for them. And when we're stacking trees on top of every other house and, you know, just putting these huge homes on small lots with very, you know, lots of parking for driving, you know, you can't drive and the setback is also reduced. So now they don't, they can't even park on their own driveway. They've got to find someplace to park. And I can give you about twelve neighborhoods where that's nightmare.
It's true, but I will also tell you right now, there's a bill going through the legislature with regards to parking requirements that jurisdictions are allowed to impose. So that question may be answered for us.
Yeah, so I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna mention that. You know, what we're, what we're doing tonight is trying to establish, because we, we have to allow six of the nine. It's not optional. It's not like we can do one or two. It's like, we got to do six of the nine. So number one, we want to make sure that the planning commission is kind of on board with our approach as, as we develop the code. The, as we develop the code and and kind of the next steps, well, you know, part of this is kind of the devil's in the details, right? So it's things like parking and neighborhood compatibility. And, you know, what do these things kind of look like? Privacy issues, height issues that Jennifer mentioned, all those things need to be worked out. But parking is one that the legislature, so if you've got concerns with parking in your neighborhood, chances are there's not much that the city is going to be able to do with it. It's, it's going to be, talk to your state legislature because the state is basically getting in the business of precluding the city from regulating parking. So, you know, they, they want more housing of all types and and not requiring any parking frankly, which is, which is kind of crazy to think about because
Leaving off the list, sixplexes and
Courtyard apartments.
Yeah.
And courtyard apartments, I mean, they were really popular in the fifties and sixties. Honestly, for an owner, the courtyard apartments are a maintenance nightmare.
Sure. Yeah, who takes care
That's why I fell out of favor, right?
Maintenance, just getting to your property, the crime, the, because you can't see your vehicle. You got to park way out there and then lock your vehicle.
Oh, that's an interesting point.
Karen, did I say your head?
Yeah, I was just thinking about the stacked flats. And it seems, you know, living in larger cities where flats are more popular with kind of the historic, you know, going back to Victorian homes with those flats. It, it is a wonderful, a wonderful way to, you know, I'm thinking about my daughter who's ready to move out and she's planning to move into a house with her friends. And that's kind of like the college life, rent a flat and you have five people renting a home together. And it seems, I hear the pushback about going three and four stories. But when you're talking about infill, if you are planning these communities where you can have a lot of these flats or these different types of housings close together, that seems like a great way to have more housing in a vertical stance. But maybe not looming over, you know, our little one-story ramblers. But in a, in a planned area, it seems like that's a great way to achieve the density that's necessary for this generation who's not going to be able to afford an apartment by themselves.
So and and that's a great point. And, and my thinking, if, if you really want to see what's possible, go look at the South Capital neighborhood. And then the neighborhood that's across Capital Way from that, which is the same age, but it's not called South Capital. A lot of those older one and a half story homes were converted to duplexes. Where, where the top half story was converted into an apartment. And there's also a lot of apartments over there that look like huge houses. And there's actually one on Capital Way next to Wagner's. Big white place. I don't remember the name of it. It looks just like an oversized house, but there's actually fourteen apartments in it. So neighborhood compatibility can be achieved.
Yeah, that, that's what really surprises me about the survey, that people look at a very generic drawing, you know. And, and, and it is very hard to visualize, you know, how something's going to be designed and built that could hold, that could be a fourplex or, you know, a sixplex or whatever. It's, it's really, you know, it's very difficult for people, even when they walk into a house that's already built to go, oh yeah, this living room worked for my couch and my chair, you know, I mean, it's, you just can't, a lot of people just can't do that. And, and so I'm surprised that you got some, some such variation in the scores, not huge, but still some. It, it really depends on the aesthetic of the building when it's finished on a lot.
Absolutely.
It does.
I think people sometimes, you know, you ask, what do you want? They have this kind of vision in their head, right, of what, what a fourplex looks like and maybe it's a good vision, but some of them maybe it's not.
And when you look at some of those lots that are like on Golf Club and Fourteenth and all, those are huge lots. Huge, they are old-style lots. They're not new lots. You could build easy, you know, a fourplex on there and have a lot of green space, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think people also, you know, they have a lot of concern that, well, especially if, you know, we, we've allowed middle housing up to a triplex for several years now, is that, you know, there's not a lot of wholesale change in a neighborhood over time because the economics of the situation, you are going to, are basically going to limit the, the transition in that neighborhood. If, if all of a sudden the property values just, you know, skyrocketed and everybody wanted to sell to a developer, that's a different story. But, you know, right now, the economics are such that like, it doesn't make sense to demolish a house and then build something brand new because construction costs are so high.
If you sell the house, where are you going to go and buy something?
So, so that's something just to keep in mind too, is that while people kind of have this So, so that's something just to keep in mind too, is that while people kind of have this, you know, maybe this perception that like, well, if, all of a sudden, if you. Allow these things, the floodgates are, will open and it'll change your neighborhood overnight. It's, it's a gradual change and there, you know, it's not something that, you know, you'll see in a, in the immediate future. But um you will see it, you know, happen. Unfortunately, and this is something that, that, you know. Maybe it's kind of adjacent to the parking topic, is that a lot of these areas, kind of like around Golf Club Road, et cetera, are all kind of older lots. That don't have sidewalks. They don't have like the good, you know, infrastructure that some of the, the other areas of town do. And um and uh, you know, unfortunately for us, you know, that's, like, again, the legislature said, you know, you really need, you gotta allow it. And so regardless of what infrastructure is there to be able to support it. So um, you know, it will stress things like parking, like, you know, safe walking s- spaces and, and those kinds of things. Bikes, bike routes and, and the like, because those air, those neighborhoods were not um developed once upon a time. They were developed for, you know, a, a little fourteen-hundred-square-foot house on a quarter-acre lot or a third of an acre lot. Um so, yeah.
True. I was um just curious about what. What would be the necessity of excluding any of the housing types? If we're thinking about developers, I mean, is it imperative to say that these things are never gonna be. Something that we could possibly consider a developer bringing to our community? Or is there a real detrimental, I mean, if people don't want it, they won't build it, but is it really our place to exclude that type of a housing from what's possible?
I was thinking about that and then I went back in time and put my city council member hat on. And the thing, they're gonna hear from their constituents, right? And if an ordinance comes in front of them that is allowing an unpopular development type, they're not gonna vote in favor of it.
I think also too, and, and you know, you, you heard it, is that like. Duplexes, triplexes, even up to a fourplex is somewhat consistent with what we've seen over time and old, especially in older neighborhoods. Once you start to get to that like fiveplex, sixplex, that's just in my mind, the, the scale and the character associated with those buildings. And I think that's what you're seeing bear, you know, in the, in the survey results. It's just not quite exactly what's keeping, in keeping with those older uh neighborhoods. So um, you know, I think that's, that's probably why at this point, you know, we're, we're just probably not there yet as a city. So maybe that's middle housing phase two point O at some point. At, at this point, I think we gotta walk before we can run. So we gotta, you know, get those initial ones on board, see how we do. And then if we need to expand it sometime in the future, we always can do that.
Well, the um, one of the uh common themes that in talking with the public is. For this subject is their worry is the mixed use of mixing their seven hundred thousand dollar homes. With a triplex, duplex, fortified and low-income housing. I, I know that's not a popular view and that's something that, that is considered very unpopular, but they have a valid point.
Can I reply?
Should I reply first? Cool point.
And I knew that would get you, Jennifer.
If you look at communities that have truly mixed housing. Where you've got this broad range of income demographic, living in, in a fairly small area. Those communities are far more successful than when you segregate.
I, I would beg to disagree. I, I live in an old neighborhood next to the fourplexes, the duplexes. Section eights, and I worry about my vehicles nightly.
Cause those are segregated neighborhoods. They're not truly mixed.
That's. I'm literally a block away in my nice home next to the lake. So. No, they're not segregated. I'm sorry. And I, I know we, we can go the politically correct route. But we have to voice the concerns of the public. When the developers are forced to put in these low-income housing units. At some point, we have to be able to say, sorry, state legislators, this is not really a viable product.
So the only thing, Elliot, that I wanted to mention, and this might be helpful. Um and, and this can be a tool that certainly we would love to have everybody here helping your constituents to, to understand the difference. Um is that middle housing is, is not synonymous with affordable housing. So you're, you've got two different terms there. Um so middle housing, uh the reason maybe it has been associated with this term affordability. Is because there is a theory, right, that through developing a product that is simply smaller, right? Therefore, taking less material and less manpower to build, that in theory. Um the real estate market should produce this or, or, you know, have this product at. A more affordable price than, you know, say, some of the standard single-family home prices that we're seeing right now. So I think that could be the difference, Elliot, and I think you have a, a really valid interest in concerns. But um, um we should all challenge ourselves to kind of remember that difference there.
And I, I live in a neighborhood that's also an older community that's mixed. We have a housing uh authority building at the end of our, our apartments. And we have a duplex in the middle that's just sold for about a million dollars. And we have all these, this mixed style, the triplexes and all the, the different things. I love my community and I think the diversity is absolutely amazing. You know, we, we see our neighbors, we knock on doors, have community get-togethers. And I think it's that the really strong community that have had a couple of rows about, about parking on law. I will, uh be- because it, the hardest thing is, is having these houses with, without the sidewalks and without the, without. Um and even though we live close, it's, it's really hard for people who are, are living, you know, in a three-bedroom house. With, with a, a garage that doesn't really fit more than one vehicle. And, you know, maybe they have a teenager that just started driving, so it's really hard to integrate that into the community. But every time, i- it does trigger me a little bit to hear affordable housing, knowing that eighty-five thousand dollars. Is at that low-income level and eighty-five thousand dollars to, to hear that people might be criminals. Because they're at that eighty-five thousand dollar mark, uh or even less when people are, are hardworking. It's, i- it is always challenging to um show the constraints sometimes necessary. When, when I hear like things that really trigger me like that.
And, and we don't mean trigger you. And I'm, we're voicing concerns. On, on that level, because when the state legislator says that they have to provide the housing for indigenous. That, that's.
I don't think they're putting people who are unhoused in at zero percent and, and people are, who are receiving drug therapy and counseling and, and. Criminal, you know, supports or whatever, whatever they're doing. I don't think that they're saying, oh, let's take uh the people who really need the most help. Uh for social cognitive needs and put them next to, you know, million-dollar homes or, or people.
So I.
I, I, yeah.
Kind of went sideways here. I'm gonna ask you guys to, to move this conversation offline or we'll have it in the future. Jennifer, I want to thank you for your presentation. I think it's been very productive.
Was that a yes?
Yeah, we had consensus.
So all we needed was just a general thumbs up there, you know, we will come back to you with, yeah, yeah. With the, the draft code at some point in the future. Um and um, and you know, there'll be additional discussions uh around this topic for sure. So we just at this point wanted to make sure that we're on the right track as we start developing this, this code language, so appreciate the feedback.
We appreciate your time. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you for staying for the whole meeting. All right, we're adjourned.
Get you a gavel again.
For these meetings? No, I, I, I keep saying updated, but.